All right, I'm going to call to order a regular member of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, December 6, 2021, 6:30 PM. The first item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance, if you will join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to welcome our newest selectman, Jim Bullock. Do you prefer Jim over James?
Jim is fine.
Jim is good. Okay, so, welcome. I look forward to working alongside of you for all of Wellington.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is approval of minutes are on November 15th. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes with one correction. Under approval of minutes, it should say "selectmen" blessing and not "selectwoman" blessing. We apologize for that error. Second, any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, I will call for a vote. Jim?
I abstain.
Liza?
Hi.
Erica?
Hi. Motion carries. So, for our selectman, Bullock, I will just clarify that with the new implementer bill and remote or high grid meetings, you have to do a roll call vote if it's not unanimous. And because you were at Bucky, you had a feeling this one would be unanimous. So if I think there's not an issue, I will first call for a vote all in favor. If that doesn't work and it's not unanimous, then we'll do a roll call. All right, next item is present to speak. If there's anyone in the room or on Zoom that would like to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? See some cameras go on here. Yes, sir.
Colonel Tintich, 97, Trask Road, I want to extend my warm wishes and welcome new Board of Selectmen. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak? Yes.
Hi, Mike McCool, Clover. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on the outgoing and incoming board. While I may not have agreed with every decision made by the previous board, I believe the majority members have shown care and leadership, and the majority of decisions have been made with care for all of Wellington. Unfortunately, something ugly happened over the last few months. Healthy debate and exploration of alternative views has become something of name-calling and rhetoric. Outside of this board, sometimes in comments to present to speak, our new selectman, Mr. Bullock, in his previous role, had gone deeper. At the same time, he was asking for votes to be elected to the position he has now. I'm not sure he was understanding the trust he was asking for. We are asking the voters to trust you with their vote so that you can make critical decisions for them. When a member of our Towns Board of Education made statements and attempted to make decisions based on application of religion in our schools, many in our community were hurt. The reaction was strong. Mr. Bullock released a statement as chairman of the Republican Town Committee and chose to skip leadership and instead not only supported the statements but doubled down by going into accusation and name-calling. It was felt by the community as choosing some of us over all of us. That's not leadership or caring for the whole community. On election day, Mr. Bullock decided to vote without a mask and despite being very clear on the public health requirement, at the end of the night, he came to watch the vote counts and again chose to be the only one in the room not wearing a mask. No one wanted to wear a mask, but everyone else understood the need, whether by science or policy. Again, choosing some of us over all of us, his actions in front of the very voters he was asking to trust him, were not leadership or caring. On election day, our community spoke loud and clear about leadership and caring. Only one Republican was elected to a contested position. Many Republicans have said to me in town since then that they know their losses were influenced by the Board of Ed comments and the "some of us over all of us" reaction by Mr. Bullock. I'll conclude this by saying I know Jim Bullock and I've often said to him that I wish he had not been voted off the Board of Finance two years ago as I trusted his judgment and learned from his leadership as chairman of the Board of Finance. And I learned from the sometime opposing views, I like Jim Bullock. Regardless of the lapse of judgment over the last few months, I sincerely hope that the new selectman regains that composure and shows the leadership and care that he sold me on years ago. I hope he realizes that some of us don't need him as much as all of us in this new role. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak? There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you so choose to speak. And once again, I'll remind you, you do not have to be on camera if you choose to speak at present. All right, we're going to move forward. Correspondence, in your packet, there's a list of correspondence. So this is a list of correspondents that have come in to the selectman's office since our last meeting, and they're all on file upstairs at any time you choose. I'll move on to my first electman's report. I do not have any new updates on the Steve Grant for the Septic. We have a few items that we're still working forward on, and one of them is easement to go to town meeting, but nothing new from the state as of yet. The school building committee has not met since our last meeting, so nothing new to update there. Nothing new on the lotset project, we're waiting for a commitment to fund. Union negotiations, we did, if you recall, our Thanksgiving, we had our first official negotiation session. I think it went well. We exchanged proposals. We are meeting again this Wednesday at 4:30. So I hope to have something very soon. This entire board is on that. COVID-19 updates. So I will share with you that as of last Wednesday, the 2nd of November, our vaccine percentage rate was 59.5% fully vaccinated. So since our last meeting, that's 43 more individuals fully vaccinated. And now that's including children's side. I did not have an opportunity to check today's COVID positive cases, but we haven't had an increase of 23 COVID cases, bringing us to a total of 361 positives and 35 probables since our last meeting. That's a significant increase. Again, it could be more. The numbers came out four o'clock and I've not seen them yet. Wellington is one of 134 towns in the red alert category. We are at 19.5 cases per 100,000, and those numbers come out every Thursday. I will share with you that the guidance, if you're above 15-plus cases, is everyone should wear a mask in public indoor settings, take additional precautions recommended by CDC to protect yourselves. You should wear a mask in all public spaces when close to people outside of your household and avoid close interactions with people outside of your household in any indoor and outdoor settings. So we just want to be cognizant of that guidance as we move forward. And again, with the data showing an increase across the state, I really want to urge all of our residents who are eligible, and that's five years old and up, to get vaccinated. And then if you have any, if anyone has any questions, I always encourage them to speak to their opposition. But I really want to encourage folks to consider being vaccinated. If you received your first dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's been more than two months, or Moderna or Pfizer, and it's been more than six months to get a booster. And there will be a clinic at Hall School this Wednesday evening. Wednesday evening at Hall School, so there are details on our website in Eastern Highlands Health District. For boosters? It's for everything. So if you need a booster, there will be a second clinic. So if you get an initial dose, you'll be able to come back. And I apologize. It'll be, I think it's the 29th. Yeah, I believe it's the 29th. We'll check on that. And then I wanted to update you on the break-in that we had here at Town Office Building in October. So what I will simply say is the two juveniles were identified in connection with the matter, and a legal process is unfolding. And my office will provide information if and when it becomes necessary. Any questions on? All right. All right, Public Works, Troy is here. So let Troy update you on things. On things from the works.
We're still doing the trash at the park. We picked up three appliances the other day. I think I wrote washer, two dryers, somebody just brought to the side. We removed eight hazardous trees on Common Road, which we call the chuck hole. Lyndon came in and removed some of them. Then we installed a bigger turnaround down there. We have a problem with our trucks when it was winter time. So we went in there, cleared it out, made it big enough, so we can turn around in the prom. We fixed a turnaround on Baxter Road. We fixed a turnaround on Blair Road. We turned around for our blow trucks. We assisted with traffic control on Old Farms the other day. I tracked the trailer truck. Said it'd come down and turn in the school parking lot. It got stuck. So we had to re-group traffic. They were all ended up taking care of it. We've chipped brush in a few spots around town. We're working on the trucks, fixing little repairs, lates constantly. We're getting ready for the upcoming snowstorm. We picked up some. I hope not, but we're just.
Can you say the letters on the record?
Yeah, no, it's no, for those of us.
We picked up a few dead deer that were hit by cars on the side of the road. And then we worked today to install two traffic signs that the state gave us. One's going to be going on Penny Hill and one will be on Caesar. So the state gave them, they gave each town two of these signs. They're going to monitor them for us and give back data. So that's.
Are they speed control?
Yeah, they're speed control signs. So they did a study through the whole state in each town that they picked out certain roads that they said that most traffic and most accidents were on. So that's where Penny Hill, Bertley, and Caesar had the most traffic and the most accidents, according to their data. So we're going to put the signs there for about a couple of months, and then we'll remove them and put them somewhere else in town. And they collect the data for us and do their study.
And is there any idea of what the outcome is expected? Is it just to collect data?
I think it's just to collect data, you know, to see the speed limits. Or, you know, maybe what they can do if there's something about sightline needs to be changed. They're just trying to pile all this stuff off.
And they share this with us at some point?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's monitored. I will be able to see it, but they take all the data. They'll give like a quarterly report. You know, if we put the sign up, say for like three months on Caesar Road, we'll move it to another place. They'll take that data and go. They like to switch to the opposite side oncoming and go in traffic. So we'll put it for like a month and a half or a month, and then a month on the other side to see how much the speed difference is.
I recall the state gave almost every town.
Every town.
Every town, two signs. So we're generous benefactor of that. And this is an area, there's a lot of, the apartment complexes are in there, and we've heard repeatedly from residents in that area, not residents of those apartments, that speeding is a concern. You know, it's a throughway to Epcot. So we'll see if this does anything to affect the speed of people. Although we can argue that just about every road in town has an issue with speeding. When we put these up, there's no issue with speeding. Thank you. And that's by no means a comprehensive list of the things that Public Works is doing, for sure. So you're part-time animal control, cleaning up deer.
Well, part-time cleanup.
You just never know what they're going to be doing. I think that same day you went from cleaning up a deer to kind of a flag crew or a tractor trailer at a very inconvenient time, just as soon as getting out. I'm worried about that. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Any other questions for Troy? All right, old business. You'll see back in front of you the ordinance which we approved at our last meeting. Ordinance to establish the American Rescue Commission. So we did approve it. Our attorney added just two small elements after rescue plan, American Rescue Plan Act right in the top there highlighted for you. He suggested we add public law number 117-2, and then the effective date, 3/11/21. And then a footnote under number item one, the commission shall consist of the following town officials and community members. You'll see the footnote at the bottom, current as of the effective date of the ordinance. And then we had added in a current member, specifically a current member of Wellington Economic Development Commission. As we were, those items from the attorney came after we approved them. And then Kelsey and I have begun to notice in one of the, in the Microsoft Office project, as we begin to move things over, one of the big items was moving all of our documents from servers. And so we're starting to notice some issues with some documents and not everything being there. I wasn't sure if what you saw was the correct complete language the first time. So I felt since there was a change, at least that minor change, to put the whole thing back in front of us to make sure all of the language was there. The first thing we saw, they can't tell because the document hasn't sat newly, it's a little bit tweaked. As you can imagine, converting documents, there's always a slight issue. And we don't know what it looked like before. I knew it looked like when we opened it, but I also had a copy in my Google Docs. And so we were able to compare it to know that something was missing in the word "documents" on the servers. So I would ask, I would make a motion that we approve the edited version of the ordinance to establish an American Rescue Plan Commission. Second of my lines, any discussion?
Yes. So I'm looking at this, and was this reviewed by the town attorney?
Yes. And the only suggestion, the only changes that the attorney needed was adding the public law and the footnote.
So from my experience on the Board of Finance, I'm familiar with the general statute 7348, which seems to indicate that only the Board of Finance can appropriate funds and make spending decisions here. So I don't know whether he's looked at it in regards to that. I would.
He did. So what?
I would really like to see what his opinion is or thought.
So item A, under number six, the commission shall be the grant administrator. So this is treated as a grant, thus giving this commission the ability.
And that gets us, that gets us around the.
This is.
Point of 7348?
That is correct. And I actually had two attorneys take a look at it. Yes, this for sure went through our.
That's my first question. My first question was like, hey, is it legal?
Yes.
So, because it's legal, doesn't necessarily mean. There's my, my other thing is I'm looking at the very last item F. And so the commission will be responsible for all, for appropriate use of funds, shall create internal local controls or back of expenses subject to audit. I'm, that's basically saying the committee itself will police itself. And that's kind of why, you know, the Board of Finance takes care of spending and then we have a treasurer to take care of revenue coming in. So it's, it's, it's a very unusual thing to have a committee police itself. I think, I think this committee is a good idea. I think it's great to aggregate all these ideas, you know, where you could possibly use this funding. You've got all these great sources and all that. I would envision it being set up more like, like having CIP, an advisory type of committee, where then you follow that process. When you say, look, you know, here we think, here's some capital things we think you could spend your money on or something like that. But I like it still flowing through our normal financial processes. And that way, the public is aware of it, has lots of transparency. A point for comment, but you don't have to mess muck around with what's the priority of this, that, because this committee will already do that.
We could walk right in front of it and it still shuts off. I understand.
So, so that's my concern. And I like things being transparent. You know, I like to have, you know, I think having this, I think having a committee and advisor please is a great idea. Collect those ideas and all that stuff, but still run it through CIP. I mean, the CIP can certainly handle that.
So CIP is a capital improvement plan? These aren't necessarily.
Right, well, it should run through also through Board of Finance. But what the thing, what you don't want them doing is like say, oh yeah, I think we should spend it here. And then you're committing the town to some recurring expense that, you know, which I'm not sure is technically legal either. So.
Right, so, so there are, there are parameters to the fund. And I absolutely hear what you're saying. That's why there is, our business manager is part of this, required to be part, a member of the Board of Finance, the first selectman. So there are multiple entities here. These are public meetings. They will all be in public. One of the items is, you know, soliciting input shall encourage facility and solicit input from the community. So there be public hearings. The commission has to educate the public, be at a host of presentation and fund updates. So I understand what you're saying. And for this particular case, I am advocating for the establishment of the commission as it stands. So.
Okay, well, you hear my.
Yes.
My perspective here, I'm taking a totally different one. I'm all for transparency. You have a hard enough time just dealing with that non-lapsing fund for the Board of Ed. It creates confusion every year. So any place I could do to reduce confusion and follow flow things with normal processes, I think is good for our town. It's my opinion.
Yeah, and I hear you. I think part of the challenge is with this, also the ability to, to process funds in an expedited way if that's needed. So if we are identifying that there are individuals or businesses that need rescue funds, which is what the money is, we would want that to be able to be processed as soon as possible rather than go through all of the regular processes, like the hearings and the things that can hold it up for months. So I think that's the, the goal of this money is for it to be more rapid relief funds in addition to some of the longer-term infrastructure stuff that we can justify under the grant. But also having that flexibility to release funds in a more, you know, rapid relief kind of a way as we did. But I do think, I mean, your point is very well taken. And again, I, what we had discussed, I think, last time as well was, as with all of our public meetings, you know, this is, again, this is a public meeting. And members of, you know, residents who really want to know what's going on, will have to. Right, well, I think they're encouraged, right? So it will be, they have to be warned meetings, just like any other public meeting. Yeah. Transparency is important to me, Jim. I think it's, you know, there was nothing hidden here. We're talking about an 11-member panel who, you know, knowing some of the individuals who hold these current positions take great care and seriousness in the spending. The commission, one of the items is the commission shall develop a multi-year spending plan. There are limitations on when it has to be encumbered and when it has to be spent by. Those are clear cut dates as of today. And I say this because what we're following the rules under are the interim final rule. At some point, you don't know when, we all thought by now there'd be a final rule. But there's not the urgency for the final rule. And that, you know, current procurement ordinance is still have to be followed. So. I think we just.
Different angle. And I do know the Board of Finance has been very responsive in the past. We only had a public meeting down at, as I recall, River Road Athletic Complex, just to, we had to turn some lights up quickly before the weather and all that, and we did that. So it, it's not like the Board of Finance isn't responsive and hasn't reacted. They've been doing a good job of that historically. So the other last thing I have is just having the commission responsible for everything. Having responsible for taking, inducting the money, spending the money, reporting the books. That's, that needs to be divided up. That's not good. That's just bad financial practice. You don't have the same rule doing everything. I would recommend at least that be changed.
Well, so the documenting, well, we have it through our business office. Well, I mean, that's where.
If it's happening through our treasurer.
Absolutely.
Watching this and having our auditors.
Yeah, absolutely. Every fund, anything we have, any dollars we have, we have to go through that office there in the same accounting system we spend all of our dollars in and absolutely go through the audit process.
Have we discussed this with our auditors as well?
I didn't discuss this particular play. We discussed with the auditors the last time they were here. Our auditor and I discussed different uses of it, specifically new revenue avenue.
Because they were very helpful when we had questions like that.
And this, right, this, we did take this from another statutory town, the same language. And I still write it through our attorney and another attorney. So again, I'm just sharing that with you that this is.
Yeah, since I, I've been a part of it, I'm looking at the discussion. I'm looking at, hey, there's some warning signs.
These are not just books kept by a commission, and that's what's going to get turned over. Everything runs through the finance office at the end of the day.
I still think it would be good to have our accountants look at this. Right, they're very good at advising those type of things. This is a control issue. They would advise us on how to set it up or make sure it's set up properly.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote.
All right, Liza?
Hi.
Jim?
No.
Erica?
Hi.
All right, new business. All right. The first item is awarding a B2 survey, RFP for the Towneage property. So if you all recall, we were purchasing the last piece of land on the off of Meeks and Road, the Towneage property, that the Conservation Commission applied for a grant for. And one of the items that is required is a B2 survey. So we sent out an RFP and we received one. Kelsey, can you tell me how many we sent?
We sent out six.
We sent out six invitations to bid and we received one. And so Mike D'Amato, our current zoning agent, did review the bid, which is from Gardner and Peterson Associates. And their contract is GNP will perform the services for a lump sum fee of $12,800. So I'll make a motion to award the RFP for the land surveying services for the Towneage estate property in Wellington, Connecticut, in the amount of $12,800 to Gardner Peterson Associates LLC. Second, if I select, if you like, any discussion? Well, I was disappointed we didn't receive more bids. I know that I'm speaking with Mike and some others, everyone is pretty swamped these days. So it wasn't a surprise to us not to get a lot. I know lots of folks are spread pretty thin with things that are happening about the state. So. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? I, motion carries. The next item is award the truck leasing RFP. So Donna did not be with us tonight, but in your packet, you should see the bid results for the three Public Works vehicles. So there's a new Freightliner cloud truck, a Ford F-450 and a Ford F-350. The total amount of the leasing is $335,170.31. We received three bid results. And Donna's recommendation is that we award a contract to municipal leasing, who came in at 1.65% and the fees of $795.
Is that a one-time pre-deal?
Yes. Signature Public Funding Board came in at 1.8% and no fees. And American Capital Financial Services Inc. was 2.69% and zero fees. So I'm going to make a motion to award the seven-year lease in the amount of $335,170.31 for the 2022 Freightliner, the 2022 Ford F-450, and the 2022 Ford F-350 to municipal lease consultants for 1.65%. Second by Liza, I will share with you, we budgeted this item at 4%. And so this will be favorable $3,038.
This is obviously.
Yes. And it's correct, all three of them. And so this lease is, the term is seven years. It's 14 equal payments of principal and interest paid semi-annually in bid bank. Any other discussion? That's part one of this. It'll be part two. So all those in favor of the motion? I, motion was unanimous. Part two of the same lease is a resolution. So I will move a resolution of the Town of Wellington authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement with respect to the acquisition, purchase, finance, and leasing of certain equipment or capital items for the public benefit, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing all other actions necessary to the consumption of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. Whereas the town of Wellington, a body politic and corporate duly organized. And existing as a political subdivision of the town of Wellington, the Leacy is authorized by the laws of the state of Connecticut to purchase, acquire. And lease personal property for the benefit of the Leacy and its inhabitants. And to enter into contracts with respect there too. And whereas the Leacy desires to purchase, acquire, finance and lease certain equipment with a cost not to exceed. Constituting personal property necessary for the Leacy to perform essential governmental functions, the equipment. And whereas the Leacy proposes to enter into that certain master lease purchase agreement and schedule number one thereto the lease. With municipal leasing consultants LLC and/or its assigns. Or one of its affiliates, the Lesor. The form of which has, has been available for review by the governing body of the Leacy prior to this meeting and. Whereas the equipment is essential for the Leacy to perform its governmental functions. And whereas the funds made available under the lease will be deposited. With pursuant to the terms of the certain escrow, that certain escrow agreement. Among the Leacy, the Lesor and escrow agent satisfactory to the Lesor and the Lessee. The escrow agreement and together with the lease, the financing documents. And will be applied to the acquisition of the equipment in accordance with said escrow agreement. And whereas the Leacy has taken. The necessary steps, including those related to any applicable legal bidding requirements to arrange for the acquisition of the equipment. And whereas the governing body of the Leacy, Lessee does, uh, deems it. For the benefit of the Lessee and for the efficient and effective administration. Thereof to enter into the financing documents and any other documentation necessary. Convenient or appropriate for the purpose of the finance, of the financing, the equipment on the terms and conditions described wherein.
And halfway.
Halfway. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wellington, Connecticut as follows. Section one, the Lessee is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the financing documents. With principal component of rental payments in an aggregate amount not to exceed $335,170.31. Section two, the financing documents and the acquisition of financing of the equipment under the terms and conditions as described in the financing documents. Are hereby approved. The first selectman, Erica Wyszynski of the Lessee and any other officer of the Lessee with the power. To execute contracts on behalf of the Lessee be and each of them hereby is. Authorized to execute, acknowledge and deliver the financing documents and any and all instruments, documents and certificates. Which may be required by or provided for in the financing documents. Or as may otherwise be required for or necessary, convenient or appropriate. To the financing described in this resolution, together with any changes, insertions and omissions there, therein. As may be approved by the officers. Who execute the. Such approval to be conclusively evidenced by such execution and delivery of the financing documents. Town clerk of the Lessee and any other officer of the Lessee with the power to do so. Be and each of them hereby is authorized to affix the official seal of the Lessee to the financing documents and attest the same. The proper officers of the left, I'm sorry, section three, the proper officers of the Lessee be and each of them hereby is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all papers, instruments. Opinion, certificates, affidavits and other documents. And to do or cause to be done any and all other acts and things necessary or proper for carrying out this resolution and the financing documents. Section four, pursuant to section two, six, five, B of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, uh, as amended, the code. The Lessee hereby specifically designates the lease as a qualified tax exempt obligation for purposes of section. Two, six, five, B, three of the code. Section five, nothing contained in this resolution, the lease nor any other instrument shall be construed with respect to the Lessee. As incurring pecuniary liability or charge upon the general credit of the Lessee. Or against its taxing power. Nor shall the breach of any agreement contained in this resolution, the lease or any other instrument or document executed in connection therewith. Impose any pecuniary liability upon the Lessee. Or any charge upon its general credit or against its taxing power. Except to the extent that the rental payments payable under the lease are special limited obligations of the Lessee. As provided on the lease. Section six. In any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this resolution shall for any reason be held to be invalid or unenforceable. The invalidity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, clause or provision shall not affect any of the remaining provisions of the resolution. Section seven, all bylaws, orders and resolutions are parts thereof inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. To the extent only of such inconsistency. This repealer shall not be construed as reviving any bylaw, order, resolution or ordinance or part thereof. Section eight, this resolution shall take effect immediately. The foregoing resolution. Was duly passed and adopted at a board of selectmen meeting. The governing body of the town of Wellington, Connecticut held on November sixth by the following vote. Just, did I say just? Did I read November? So December sixth, corrected. Uh, the following resolution will be duly passed and adopted at a meeting of the board of selectmen. The governing body of the town of Wellington, Connecticut held on December sixth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Okay, so can you give us the Cliff Notes version?
Yeah, this is the resolution, uh, we approved to use that vendor. This is the, um. What gives us the right to sign the contracts.
Gotcha.
And the lease. And be responsible for the payments. And it's giving, um, uh, me the power. I have the power to fix the seal to it. Legally likes a run on sentence.
It's ridiculous. It is absolutely ridiculous.
Yes.
And anybody could read this. Like I looked at this and read it and I still don't know.
Um, if you had heard the discussion as to whether or not we actually do need it into the record or could we say it was as presented. Um, determined it must be read.
Yep.
I apologize. All right, so there was a, a motion by myself, a second by Liza. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. We'll get a corrected version. Um, we'll get back upstairs and I will sign this. You can get it to Donna and send all the people that tomorrow. Thank you. All right, we're getting there. Okay, we're gonna let Troy talk for a little bit. Uh, item C, award the contracts for the TOB basement project. So if you recall, we had a, a project. To mitigate, um, the, um, basement where we had mold and concrete on the dirt floor. So, um, what you see, there's two different vendors.
So the mitigation.
For us, mitigation and then the concrete.
Here.
Correct. So, um, first I'll make, um, a motion to award the cleaning of the town office building basement in the amount of $16,894.56. The service master by RRT. So this is, um. This will be, take care of the cleaning of all the parts of the basement. It will include moving things out of the basement. Bring, um, what remain down there, um, mitigating any mold, um, remaining in the building. And that will be done prior to laying the concrete. So that it's all clean, um, and then concrete put over.
What's the, uh, thirteen hundred seventeen dollar, it says, uh, replacement cost of that?
That's for the, uh, contents in the, in the room.
Something was damaged?
No, in the event. So there's nothing, right. So there's nothing and there's a, there's charge for all of that.
They just took the value of what was in the room. You know, damage it, that's.
That correct, correct? Um, so you will notice that the quote, um, originally was dated, uh, from June of twenty twenty-one. They did come out last week and meet with Troy and they honored the same. Dollar amount, which, um, was a pleasant surprise with the cost of just about everything increasing. Uh, and all, I think what Troy or I expected, um, with this, so we were happy to see that. So if. Through this contract and the next, um, I believe we will come in well under budget for this entire project. That makes me happy. Any other discussion? On the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. All right, I will make a motion to award the concrete block and restoration of the town office building basement in the amount of $21,500 to Jake's Foundation, Inc. Seconded by Liza, discussion. So you only see one, uh, proposal in front of you, Troy? How many did we?
There we sent it to about eight contractors and. One replied, it didn't want to do the crawl space down below because it's so small. And Jake was the only one that actually came out. Do the job for us, Stan.
And, and we've heard that multiple times in the past that nobody wants to take on that crawl space. And so the crawl space is from just about, uh, I think from about the tax office. Under to my office or is it just under?
No, it's probably from where the tax office is.
And so that, if you go downstairs, it's just a crawl space. But if we don't do that and leave that as dirt. I think we're gonna find ourselves with the same moisture problem. And potential, uh, mold possibilities. So, you know, it was important to, to do the entire project. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Troy will move forward. I, I think, um, the last he spoke to, um, Jake's, they were probably looking into January.
Yeah, around January. Depending on. We have the line. You know.
Meditation.
There should be no problem doing this.
No, no problem.
They had had some opening in their schedule and they could have done it far sooner. Unfortunately, we have a process to follow and so we couldn't commit to. Anyone sooner than that. So while it would have been great.
I'm just wondering if.
Yeah.
Being into crawl space and it's cold in the winter time is the kind of that pulls problem, but.
No, not with.
Maybe there's enough heater.
Yeah, there's enough in there. It's not like it's on the outside where it's, it's still.
And that crawl space is just a small amount. The rest of it goes from, um, under the vault all the way across. So that's, um, dirt and under the vault portion is, um. That's concrete area down there. So that front room won't be poured in concrete, just the rest of it, but all of it will be. All right. All right, we should move quickly through here, I believe. But I will make, uh, we'll move to item D, tax refunds. I will make a motion to refund Juliette. Tenko, a certificate of correction, amount of $51.74. Seconded by, uh, Selectman Bullock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. I will move to refund BW Credit Leasing LTD, a certificate of correction in the amount of $76.48. Okay. Seconded, Selectmen Borat. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. Let's be all that reason. All right, and we have several appointments. So I'll say it now and I'll say at the end, I want to thank all those who've stepped forward. To serve on very important, um, boards, commissions and different roles in the town. And with that, I happily move to reappoint. Tina Binheimer as Wellington Animal Control Officer effective January one, twenty twenty-two, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Okay. By Liza, any discussion? Tina does a fantastic job and we.
Is she annual?
It's annual. Yeah. All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. Uh, item B, we have two assistant animal control officers. We have two currently and they work, uh, the weekends if you recall and, uh. For Jimmy, um, information. Tina took, uh, a job Monday, I'm sorry, on the weekends. So we have an assistant covering on weekends. Um, and in the event, uh, she's in there or currently on maternity leave. Uh, who will have a second assistant animal control officer and they cover. Monday, uh, Saturdays and Sundays. So I will move to appoint Samantha Fagan as a Wellington Assistant Animal Control Officer. Effective January one, twenty twenty-two, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Sure.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I.
I. I. Motion carries. I move to appoint Jennifer Miller as Wellington Assistant Animal Control Officer effective January one, twenty twenty-two, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. I will move to appoint Stuart Fisher as a regular member of the Parks and Recreation Commission effective December seventh, twenty twenty-one, expiring December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Certainly.
Seconded by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. I will move to reappoint Ginger Hallie as a Consumer Service Representative Member of the Youth Services Advisory Board. Effective December seventh, twenty twenty-one, expiring November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Carries. I move to appoint Christine Apparent as a member at large of the Youth Advisory. I'm sorry, the Youth Services Advisory Board, effective December seventh, twenty twenty-one, expiring December sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Seconded by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. And I move to reappoint William Bland as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, expiring December thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. All right, the last appointment is the, is a region nineteen apportionment, reapportionment committee. Liza, I know at last meeting, I think I had mentioned, we received this letter just prior to the meeting. Uh, and I think you both received a copy of it. It comes from the state, basically based on, um, new census data. Um, there's, it's been determined that the allocation of, uh, representation of voters. In the sending just towns in region nineteen district, um, needs to be redone. And a new plan needs to be done. So basically, we lost residents. So the current, uh, uh, portion now has, Wellington has too much of a percentage. Mansfield has more residents, so they don't have enough representation. They do give you a buffer and I think it's ten percent and where it's fifteen percent total. So we have to correct this. So it's a statutory process. From the day we got the letter, which was November. The letter is dated November twelfth. We received it Monday, November fifteenth. But it starts at the November twelfth date. We have thirty days to appoint a committee. Each of the three towns has to do the same thing. It's five members, two of which must be members of the Board of Education. So. With that, um, the, the timeline is required by state. The committee has to send a new plan. The state approves the plan. There's public. Um, hearings in each of the towns about the plans and it will all culminate with a referendum in each of the three towns. Assuming the plan is approved by the state and, um, approved in each of the town's referendums, it goes into effect. If it does not, then you do a referendum again. If still does not pass, eventually the state, um, will dictate a vote. This last time this process was done was in twenty twelve. Um, and I would tell you it's very memorable. Some of the folks I'm going to, uh, recommend beyond this. And not just in Wellington. Didn't remember much about the committee. It happens very. Quickly and efficiently and most of the work is dictated, um, either by state, um, statute. Or, um, basically by numbers. Census, so. Census, so. Your friend. I will move to appoint Robert Jellin as a regular member of the Region Nineteen Reapportionment Committee effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has completed. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? I move to appoint Sarah Smith as a regular member of the Region Nineteen Reapportionment Committee effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has completed. Seconded by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I move to appoint Christine Sathas as a regular member of the Region Nineteen Reapportionment Committee effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has completed. Seconded by Jim. All right, seeing none, all those in favor? I move to appoint Erica Waschinsky as a regular member of the Region Nineteen Reapportionment Committee effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has completed. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? All those in favor? And you'll see that's only for thirty-five. Either of you interested and available. I can tell you the last time this committee was out of its charge was twenty twelve. The process began in February. It culminated in an election day, November referendum. They don't know that we'd be able to follow that process and it looks like they probably had five or six years. So a commitment, not a long commitment, but we are required to have five members. The first two, John and Sarah Smith, are members of Region Nineteen and Christine Sathas participated last time this was done.
And if we don't have somebody tonight, what happens?
We have thirty days to appoint somebody. So that would be. So if either of you should be willing.
I, I, I can't make that commitment at this time.
I'll do it, but you may not be able to make it.
I may not be able to make it, especially with budgets. Sure, I think that's doable. Again, the process is started by the state. Last time they started this process in February, their first meeting wasn't until April. So I don't know when it will be. There's, there's no way to tell. And then this committee will appoint its own chair and then have meetings that look like they have it in each of the three towns to even it out. It's pretty, yeah. I mean, I was able to open a file in the Selectman's Office and follow a playbook of exactly how it was last time. So I will move to appoint Liza Boras as a regular member of the Region Nineteen Reapportionment Committee effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has completed. Seconded by Jim, any discussion? None except that I'd like to thank Liza for All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, so the next step in the process is to get these appointments to the town clerk's office, who then has to report them to the state. So I want to thank everyone who's been willing to be appointed or reappointed for a position and we've never really missed this serve. All right, item F, the town office building employee holiday party. So annually, we tried to do something here for staff, both in the town office building and public works. And this year we are hoping, I say hoping because COVID is certainly a factor as we move forward on to hold our party on December seventeenth. In the past, we have, as a board, agreed to close the town office building at noon to hold the party so that everybody could attend at the same time. So I will make a motion to close the town office building at noon time on Friday, December seventeenth for a holiday party. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? It's really, especially it's COVID times, we, you know, it's important for us, if we're able to gather to be able to do that all together. And so our willingness to, to close the building allows everyone on staff to attend. No further discussion, all those in favor? Right, there was lots on that there. And item G. Town meeting hall. So I have one more law motion. I move town of Wellington, notice and warning, public hearing and special town meeting. The electors of the town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in the town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in public hearing slash town meeting. Face masks required at the Wellington Old Town Hall, eleven Common Road, Wellington, Connecticut at seven PM on Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one for the following purposes. Item one, public hearing item. Presentation and discussion of the seven-year lease purchase agreement for a twenty twenty-two freight liner one fourteen SD conventional chassis, Tenco twelve M dash ten dash SS dash SSC O N D. All season body. A twenty twenty-two Ford F-450 XL four-by-four chassis. C, hundred forty-five inch wheelbase, Duramag, heavy-duty dump body model number DB zero nine six nine five one four SS, all aluminum, additional for color gray. And a twenty twenty-two Ford F-350 XL four-by-four S slash C one hundred forty-eight inch wheelbase for the Wellington Public Works Department. No vote on this item. Item two, to see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the board of selectmen will adopt the septic system easement and maintenance agreement for the Wellington Old Town Hall located at eleven Common Road in Wellington, Connecticut. Item three, to see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the board of selectmen will adopt an ordinance to establish an American Rescue Plan Act commission. Dated at Wellington, the sixth day of, sixth day of December, twenty twenty-one, Wellington Board of Selectmen, Erica Chi Waschinsky, Liza Boras, Jim Bullock. Is there a second? Seconded by Liza, discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, folks, that's enough of my voice. That brings us to present to speak. If you made it through all of that reading and you're still online and would like to speak. You don't, you can unmute yourself. You do not have to be on camera and state your name for the record and we ask that you limit yourself to two minutes. Yes, sir, I see you turned your camera on.
Yes. Little Trench, ninety-seven Trast Road. Rest two issues. The first is the discussion this evening. Town meeting. Creating this commission. I'm strongly opposed to not focusing on worthwhile projects for the American Rescue Act Fund, which I think everyone in Wellington supports. But I'm appalled and dismayed that the board of selectmen would recommend to the town that this commission circumvent the Board of Finance or CIP Committee, our Board of Selectmen and approval by townspeople. We, we have a legislative form of government. It's fundamental to our process that the townspeople approve all spending and this should be no different. But apparently, the majority of the board believes that it is. Secondly, I would respectfully ask that in meetings, the board allow all members of the board to speak without being spoken over, which happened repetitively tonight. Contrary, contrary to the terrible comments made during the earlier present to speak. The minority has every right to express its opinion as does the majority. And I ask that we all be allowed to hear from all of our selectmen. Very much.
Is there anyone else present to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll move forward to good and welfare. I have a few items to go through and then if there's a stuff that you have any good and welfare encourage you to share. So I will start with mobile food share is here this Wednesday. This Wednesday from eleven to eleven thirty outside, the town office building is open to all. The October police report from Troop C has a total calls of service of two hundred and seventy-seven, twelve accidents, twelve criminal investigations, two larcenies and a hundred and ninety-three reportable matters and two arrests. Motor vehicle enforcement is a total of sixty traffic stops, one onsite DUI, eighteen infractions, seventeen written warnings and twenty-one verbal warrants. This Friday, December tenth is PJ Day for the kids. This is the eleventh year that this event has been held with a mission not only to raise money but to honor the brave kids fighting cancer at Connecticut Children's Medical Center. So here at the town office building, we'll be participating along with the schools. So if you come in and you see your town office staff in their best pajamas, you'll know why and you can feel free to donate to the cause. And so everyone participating here will make a donation in order to wear their pajamas. So it's, it's a fun event for all. Once again, I ask if you can, if you can, support our small businesses and restaurants. CIP requests were sent last week to all budget writers. It's a process should be beginning in January. The annual tree lighting is back tonight during this meeting. So they, well, I see our Parks and Rec directors here, so they may be done. They were decorating trees. So those individuals or groups who sponsored a tree were decorating them at the Old Town Hall. They'll be on display at the tree lighting. It's this Friday, December tenth at seven PM. And then Parks and Rec partnered with Human Services and will donate those trees to families in need. So I want to thank everyone who stepped up to support that. There's also a gingerbread house competition being sponsored by Parks and Rec and they will be on display Friday night. So you don't want to miss it. I, I just want to remind folks that masks are required in all town buildings regardless of vaccination staff. So help us keep our staff and visitors safe and healthy. And with COVID nineteen cases, once again, rising across the state, please be reminded that if you're sick, stay home and consider being tested if we all do our, if we all do our part and we can get through this. So that's all I have for good and welfare. Liza, Jim, I'll do John. The James threw me off. It's not required, I'm just. That's a big one, yes. So, and I know our fire department at least Wellington number one, maybe Wellington home as well have been participating with a fire truck out of town at some other town events. So I thank them for helping with a little dose of holiday spirit. All right, seeing nothing else for good and welfare, I will make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty. To be no matter, all those in favor? Motion carries.